To bring this special meeting to order, the first part of our business will be to interview candidates for a possible position on the board. And after that, we will take a short recess and have an executive session, and we will come back and conduct the business of the school board for the time being. So please rise and do your pledge.
(inaudible)
Thank you. Mrs. Schaefer, roll call, please.
Fisher?
Here.
Mrs. Hess?
Here.
Mrs. Oldsberg?
Here.
Mrs. Elsie?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Present.
Dr. Volcano?
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Approve of the agenda?
Motion?
Second.
We have, I need to make sure that we have the agenda in here since the motion looks up the agenda. Motion, if you're second?
Second.
All of them, please, say aye.
Aye.
One opposed? Okay, we'll move on to that. Purpose of this meeting is to interview candidates for the Sarah Belotti Region Three vacancy of the school board until a individual to fill that position. With that being said, we'll move right to that. Our first candidate is Mr. Frank Kestervinci. Could you please come to the podium?
Yes, I am.
I think we got you here, we know who you are.
All right, now I'll finish it up.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you for showing your interest into joining this board. So I only have one question, and I'll allow the other board members questioning you after that.
Okay.
Could you please give us an overview insight about yourself? In addition, could you please focus on thoughts on how your skills can enhance the needs of the school district in the capacity as a school board member?
Sure. Good evening, thank you. I'm Frank Kestervinci. A little bit about me on the personal side, I'm Forks Township resident, and I've lived in the Easton School District for most of my life. I attended Easton Schools, and I graduated from Easton High School in 1982. I have two children that attend Easton Schools, Shawnee Elementary School. I have a son that's entering third grade, and a daughter that's entering kindergarten this year. On the professional side, I work in finance for a large company in the Lehigh Valley. I have a bachelor's degree in accounting and an MBA. I'm a controller for a particular business within a large company in the Lehigh Valley. What a controller does is essentially you're responsible for every financial aspect of the business you're supporting. So with that, you spend a lot of time understanding results, taking actions to improve results. You are doing short-term, long-term financial projections, and you're identifying risks and mitigating risks, to name just a few items that you get involved with as a controller. My motivation for pursuing a seat on the school board is essentially, you know, the past couple of years, you know, prior to having kids, a lot of us, I don't think we pay a lot of attention to the school board. And, you know, I'll tell you, I think it's obvious based on the number of candidates that you have applied, to be honest with you. You know, I had children now, and they're in the school district, and, you know, seeing the financial struggles that the district is having, it became apparent that it was inevitable for there to be decline in the quality of the education we offer our students. We spent a lot of time trying to fix the situation that we're in, and, you know, all that time is time we're not spending working on our education. With that said, you know, one other thing I'll say about myself, because I know this is talked about. You know, as I mentioned, I spent a lot of my life in the Easton School District. Because of that, I'm connected to a lot of people in the school district. One of those individuals is John Kestervinci, the HR director. You probably know that, we have the same name, he looks a lot like me, unfortunately. But, with that said, you know, I'm connected to other individuals also. As I mentioned, I have a couple of kids that are in Shawnee Elementary School. I have friends and family that have kids in the school district. I have friends and family that are senior citizens in the district, struggling to make ends meet. And I'm a homeowner, and I'm concerned about property values. And, you know, schools are a key asset in the community. We need to make sure we have quality schools that we can afford. With that said, I hope you can understand, any decision that I would make would be in the best interest of the school district and not of any one group. I think the, as it relates to why I would, what I think I would bring to the table for the school district, it essentially is my financial background and an ability to identify key areas that we need to focus on and not look past things that can cause big problems for you because they're tough to fix. With that, I'll open it up to other questions.
Board members? Fire away.
Frank, I have one. Does your schedule, is it conducive to the amount of board meetings that we have and the other committee meetings?
It is. I travel a minimal amount, and I am able to coordinate travel on my time. I dictate when I travel.
Any other board members? No bodies? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, you go.
You had already answered, I guess, it's very difficult, being a person who has someone in the district. I was going to ask the question of how you would dispel some of the, is what people would call personal agendas, so that was really my question, I guess, how you would handle it, or can you handle that?
Handle specifically my relationship with my brother-in-law.
The issues that come about being that your brother's in the position that he's in.
Well, he's, my brother is not the foundation of every decision I make, lot out. All right. We've had our disagreements along the way, as everyone in here that has a brother and sister has experienced. You know, I'm ashamed to say, we went years without talking with each other, okay? So we do not agree on everything. He, a lot of my family is experienced in education, I am not. He chose that path, I did not. I have a different, I've lived a different life, I have different views on things and how things should work. That doesn't mean we disagree on everything, but it doesn't mean we, it definitely means we don't agree on everything.
Carrie, you have a question?
I was just going to ask, since you do have children in the district, what kinds of involvements have you had with the district as a parent or just as a community member?
I have not had any more involvement than with my own kids. I have gotten involved in coaching youth sports, and in doing that, I've tried to do more than just teaching the basic skills of how to hit a ball, how to throw, or how to run, or how to move. I try to teach about teamwork and other skills that they could use in other aspects of their life as they grow up. I have not held public office before, this is new to me.
Any other board members?
Yes, Mr. Myers. Mr. Kestervinci, working on the school board requires teamwork. I assume working in, out in public, in your corporation, and in other organizations, you've had work in teams. Think back about the time when it was difficult coming to an agreement amongst the team members, and some of your problem-solving methods that you used to come to a solution with.
I manage a team.
Actable for everybody.
Okay. I manage a global team of financial analysts. They're highly educated, very bright, just like everyone else, me included, they have strengths and weaknesses. Some individuals struggle to be productive when they don't see others behaving in a way they think they should, when they're on a team. So the example I'm giving you is coaching someone that's on a team that isn't optimizing the team's efforts. And so what I did was coached them into using, focusing more on their strengths, and maintaining a positive outlook so that the team's performance is not declining. You know, one of the things that I see from afar within the district at times, from what I read in the paper, I don't sit down in meetings, things are said that are counterproductive, and that has, I think, a dramatic impact on the team you're working with. And so I try to maintain a positive outlook and positive relationships whenever I'm working through issues, even in times when we disagree.
Thank you, Mr. Kestervinci. No more questions?
Present. I just have one. First of all, I want to thank you for coming up, put your name into the mix, but I have to ask you this question. Why would you put yourself through the public ridicule that you're going to have to do by taking on a position of the board?
Everyone says that. It's disheartening. It's disheartening to see the problems that the district has had. You know, when I was younger, going through school, you know, maybe you ignore this stuff, but I don't remember the challenge, I don't remember the district facing these challenges. And so, you know, those of us that grew up in this community, you know, there's more to us than just the relationships we have with people. I mean, we care about the school district. And, you know, people may not like every decision we make, but the decisions we make are in the best interest of the school district.
Anybody else have any other questions? Any other board members? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
If you would stick around, we'll let you know. Joe, on this candidate.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Fine, thanks.
I hope we're not making you feel a little uncomfortable or nervous, you don't have to be nervous. I'm Carrie Myers, I'm present. We're going to ask you, I'm going to ask you one question and allow the board to ask you, whatever questions they're going to ask you, okay?
Sure.
I have one question. Could you give us an overview insight about yourself? In addition, could you please focus your thoughts on how your skills can enhance the needs of the school district in the capacity of a school board member or director?
Okay, my name is Kathy McIntyre. I am a mother of three. My husband Joe is a teacher with the district for about 13 years. I live in Forks Township, Dogwood Terrace. I have been a stay-at-home mom for about 10 years now. I did work in corporate America as a director of a software company, and I was in charge of Latin America and California and so forth with the technical department in a software company. I currently am a Realtor for Remax Supreme, licensed in New Jersey and Phillipsburg, and since that profession is in such a disarray right now, I sent my youngest child to first grade this year, and found myself a little bored with my time sitting at home, so I then applied for a job at Tracy Elementary, and since November, I was lunchroom monitor there. So I'm from Phillipsburg, New Jersey originally, born and raised.
You're all against you.
No, I know, I was going to say. That's basically the background of myself. Now, as far as what my intent, I guess, what was the second part of your question? I'm sorry?
In addition, could you focus on your thoughts on how your skills can enhance the needs of the school district in the capacity of a school board member or director?
Okay. I would like, probably for about two years now, this is only my second board meeting that I have attended. However, I have watched everyone through the mainstream, which I absolutely love. I just feel, as a member of this community, a taxpayer, and a mother of three, I just feel like I have a rounded set of knowledge that I can help complement the board that already exists. I found myself, in my profession as a Realtor, for the last probably four years, I found myself defending Easton School District, which is a position, being from Phillipsburg, that I never thought I would find myself doing. And, because I grew up saying my kids will never go to Easton. And, my husband is the opposite, he did go to Easton. I found myself, as a Realtor, people that were moving from Jersey, and some of you may be some of those citizens, they would say, I do want to go to Pennsylvania because the cost of housing is cheaper, however, I want to go past Easton School District. And I would sit there and say, why? And then I would explain to them that I too used to say that. I never imagined my children would go to Easton. Then, the rest of the conversation really wasn't about real estate, it was about me defending Easton School District. And I felt I could do that because of the knowledge of my husband, being a student, a teacher, a coach, a mentor, everything he is in the district, as well as me being a parent of three young children that went through the district. My kids all went to Forks Elementary, I still have one there. I have one in a middle school and one going to the middle school, with all three completely educational, different goals in life, and backgrounds and aspects. I feel that I have an array of knowledge and things that can help the board for the community. I have the parent background, I've been a member of the PTA for eight years actively, and the teacher's side of it, and now the lunchroom monitor's side of it, being in the district. I never could speak firsthand, I guess, but now that I am an employee, which I know would have to be relinquished if I were part of the board, but that six months was amazing, the things I've learned, the things I've got to see as a parent you don't get to see, and they were heartwarming. This district has a lot to offer. We're just like every other district in the area, and, I mean, everyone has their hard times right now, but I think we've prevailed. My daughter, the other, the board meeting I did attend, my daughter was part of that, her artwork was chosen for the, that was amazing to watch that Odyssey display here. So I just feel like I can add my knowledge and my experiences that I've had as a mother and an employee now to the board.
Thank you. President, fellow board members?
Kathy, I have one.
Yes?
One of the things probably when you run for a school board like this one, is that there's an in and an out of time that you must put in.
Mm-hmm.
Meetings, on board meetings, committee meetings, and then you may have expulsion meetings.
Right.
You've got to be able to attend those. Some of it, some of us have a problem with that at times, and it leaves us in a situation where we may only have three or four board members present, and then we can't conduct any business.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess what I'm looking for is your commitment more than anything else.
Yes. I am, when I set out to do something, I go in 100 percent. I'm committed. It does irk me when I watch the mainstream and see the empty seats, because I think, if you're working as a board, I do understand that you can't make them all, things come up, but I do expect to be committed to attend the meetings I am supposed to. Thank you. Mm-hmm.
Any other questions, board members? Go ahead.
I just have, I know that you've been involved with the district as a parent and also with the PTA. Have you been involved with any of the committees that have been offered to the public in the educational system here? Like what type of committees? The accreditation process? No, I have not. Okay. No, I have not. Or, I mean, any type of committee? There are a lot of other... I really kept them all into the school that I was affiliated, mostly Forks Township, since my daughter, my oldest was in a middle school going to seventh grade. I did like those type of things, like working the school store, and book fair, and, you know, I did those committees, like the end-of-year bazaar at Forks, those type of committees. But as far as AFG or anything like that, no, I have not. Are you in touch with, or, I mean, out in the community, speaking to members of the community as to their expectations, is what our public education is supposed to provide? Every day. Yeah. So you are out there? Absolutely. Like I said, I feel like I've turned into, like, defending Easton School District, and just, even with the people that do live here, that have been here, still have their negativities and things like that, which you're going to have, but I find myself trying to turn our view around and look at the good aspects of things. Thank you. Mm-hmm.
Mr. President?
Go. Mrs. McIntyre? Working on the board requires teamwork. Having worked in teams either at work or in other organizations, think back about a time when, as part of that team, there was no consensus, or a team had trouble getting to a decision. Explain how you were successful in helping lead the team, or how your philosophy would help lead the team to a positive outcome.
Okay, I think probably the best way I could do that is dating back to my past career as a systems engineer and being a director. We were about to lose a multimillion-dollar account, and it was software changes every day, it was that type of thing, they were ready to bail on us, our company. And I pooled together a team of people from all around, and basically listening instead of talking, I listened to what the problem was, and then not telling them the solution, but letting them all work to a solution, and after four and a half hours, the account was saved. So I think my biggest asset is I listen. I'm from a large family, and I don't really, sometimes you don't get to verbalize, so I sit back and I listen, and then I verbalize.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
That's all, Mr. President. Anybody else?
Yes. I ask this of Mr. Kestervinci, and I say it from experience. Can or how would you handle the criticism of being related to someone in the district?
I'm very thick-skinned. Like I said, I'm from that large, I'm from Peabody, where the husband that coaches Easton Football. If you can handle that, I think you can handle anything.
Another question? Somebody else? I can't fault you for coming from a large family. I too have a very large family, 15 members. I'll ask you the question I asked the other, Mr. Kestervinci, and it's pretty to the point. Why do you want to put yourself through this, the public ridicule? You know, you're going to get stopped in the store, and somebody's going to beat you down because of something you did.
Because my heart is in it for the youth of today and the community. I'm tired of sitting back and just listening, listening, listening. I think I have a wealth of rounded knowledge that I can add to the board that already exists, so I can handle that. As I said, I'm thick-skinned, I can handle that. That does not, you know, I am what I am, and not everyone's going to like everybody. And so be it.
Okay, one thing you need to understand, I think the whole board needs to understand, if you are selected tonight, you must resign immediately before you can even take the oath of office.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, absolutely.
Are you aware of this?
I am.
Any other questions, some board members? If not, thank you, you sit around and we'll come to a decision here shortly unless I have a lot of public... If not, okay, we'll move on to the next thing. We will have public comments regarding this special meeting on the candidates. If there's anyone that wishes to speak about it, now's the time to speak. Come on up and speak. I saw a hand back, I just don't know who it was.
You did.
Now I do. It's Mr. Ely.
My name is Kurt Ely, and I live in College Hill. This is really difficult for me to do. If I could, I would run for a position like school director, but my circumstances don't permit that. And there are two individuals here. I'd love to have the opportunity to ask a couple of questions of those individuals. Would that be permissible?
No.
No one asked if these individuals intended to run for the two-year position that's being vacated by Sarah Belotti. We know that they're interested in that period of time between now and December, or else they wouldn't be here. My personal view is that the individual that takes this spot, I hope the board would agree, should be someone who truly does intend to fill that position for the remaining two years if the public felt they warranted that. I don't think this position should be used for other forums or other purposes. Additionally, I have a problem with both candidates because of the obvious issues of nepotism. Those issues face our district every day. This district is incredible in its level of nepotism and cronyism, and the impact that it has on the cost of education and the educational process. As well-intended as these individuals may be, the fact remains that when difficult decisions have to be made by this board involving taxpayer dollars and the quality of education in this district, their relationship with family, their close friendships in some instances, unfortunately, as we've seen in the past, have come to impact, and they will come to impact. I'm going to ask if there's any possible way that your solicitor can find to do this. I'm going to ask that this board consider not making a decision tonight. I'm going to ask that an opportunity be given for other candidates, especially considering what we've learned about another board member here. The opportunity will continue for this process in our district, in District Three. We're going to lose two positions. I'm going to ask that this be extended, that some special opportunity be given so additional candidates could come forward. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have a comment? A comment? Okay. The question of whether or not the board wishes to entertain additional candidates is not so much a legal question as it is a question for the board. However, the board has 30 days from the date of the vacancy to fill the vacancy, or that vacancy can be filled by a petition of 10 electors filed with the common police court. So it's in the interest of the board to fill that vacancy within 30 days. I'm not sure what number of days this is, or when 30 days runs out suddenly here, but you need to be aware of that. Otherwise, I mean, the board is at liberty to do really whatever it wants, as long as it operates within a period of time.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Anyone that doesn't want to comment? If you do, you don't have to.
I have one question. From the first day that it was announced that her position was open, 30 days beyond that, you have, we have as a board to choose someone, correct?
No, 30 days, when the date that it was accepted.
The date it is accepted, right, announced.
Yeah, unless her, unless her resignation said something different.
It was June 23rd.
June 23rd. From June 23rd.
Which was the board meeting?
Right.
Okay. So beyond that date, if we don't choose someone within that 30-day timeframe, then it automatically goes to the courts?
It doesn't automatically go, but if there is a petition filed, then the board loses its ability to fill the vacancy.
So who files the petition?
It's 10 electors can file a petition, it's the same number it takes for a petition to get on the ballot. 10 electors file a petition, common police court, to nominate one candidate or another, and then the court points it, and that divests the board of its ability to elect the...
So we have till July 23rd, then?
No. We have, it was 23rd, July 23rd.
That's what I just said.
I thought you said 22nd.
No, I said 23rd.
23rd, yeah.
Right.
Other questions? If not, I'm going to close the session, since this is part of that. Oh, go ahead. I have a seat.
Noel Jones, 800 Berry Street. And, just to sort of echo the concerns that Mr. Ely just expressed, I've said it before and I'll say it again, this, this community is at a deficit of trust right now, and the district is rife with nepotism and cronyism, and the people are very upset about it. These candidates...
Back about a time when, as part of that team, there was no consensus or a team had trouble getting to a decision. Explain how you were successful in helping lead the team, or how your philosophy would help lead the team to a positive outcome.
Okay, I think probably the best way I could do that is dating back to my past career as a systems engineer and being a director. We were about to lose a multimillion dollar account, and it was software changes every day, it was that type of thing, they were ready to bail on us, our company. And I pooled together a team of people from all around, and basically, listening instead of talking, I listened to what the problem was. And then, not telling them the solution, but letting them all work to a solution, and after four and a half hours, the account was saved. So, I think my biggest asset is, I listen. I'm from a large family, and I don't really, sometimes you don't get to verbalize, so I sit back and I listen, and then I verbalize.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
That's all, Mr. President. Anybody else?
Yes. I ask this if Mr. Castro Vinci and I say it from experience. Can or how would you handle the criticism of being related to someone in the district?
I'm very thick-skinned. Like I said, I'm from that large, I'm from Pittsburgh, where the husband that coaches Eastern football. If you can handle that, I think you can handle anything.
Another question? Somebody else? I can't fault you for coming from a large family. I too have a very large family. Fifteen, matter. I'll ask you the question I asked the other, Mr. Castro Vinci, and it's pretty, to the point. Why do you want to put yourself through this? The public ridicule, you know, you're gonna get stopped in the store, and somebody's gonna beat you down because of something you did.
Because my heart is in it for the youth of today and the community. I'm tired of sitting back and just listening, listening, listening. I think I have a wealth of rounded knowledge that I can add to the board that already exists. So, I can handle that. As I said, I'm thick-skinned. I can handle that. That does not, you know, I am what I am, and not everyone's gonna like everybody. And so be it.
Okay, one thing you need to understand, I think the whole board needs to understand, if you are selected tonight, you must resign immediately before you can even take the oath of office.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, absolutely.
Are you aware of this?
I am.
Any other questions from board members? If not, thank you, you sit around and we'll come to a decision here for shortly unless I have a lot of public, if not, okay, we'll move on to the next thing. We will have public comment regarding this special meeting on the candidates. If there's anyone who wishes to speak about it, now's the time to speak. Come on up and speak. I saw a hand back, I just don't know who it was.
You did.
Now I do. It's Mr. Ely.
My name is Kurt Ely, and I live in College Hill. This is really difficult for me to do. If I could, I would run for a position like school director, but my circumstances don't permit that. And there are two individuals here. I'd love to have the opportunity to ask a couple of questions of those individuals. Would that be permissible?
No.
No one asked if these individuals intended to run for the two-year position that's being vacated by Sarah Baladi. We know that they're interested in that period of time between now and December, or else they wouldn't be here. My personal view is that the individual that takes this spot, I hope the board would agree, should be someone who truly does intend to fill that position for the remaining two years if the public felt they warranted that. I don't think this position should be used for other forums or other purposes. Additionally, I have a problem with both candidates because of the obvious issues of nepotism. Those issues face our district every day. This district is incredible in its level of nepotism and cronyism and the impact that it has on the cost of education and the educational process. As well-intended as these individuals may be, the fact remains that when difficult decisions have to be made by this board involving taxpayer dollars and the quality of education in this district, their relationship with family, their close friendships in some instances, unfortunately, as we've seen in the past, have come to impact, and they will come to impact. I'm going to ask if there's any possible way that your solicitor can find to do this. I'm going to ask that this board consider not making a decision tonight. I'm going to ask that an opportunity be given for other candidates, especially considering what we've learned about another board member here. The opportunity will continue for this process in our district, in District Three. We're gonna lose two positions. I'm gonna ask that this be extended, that some special opportunity be given so additional candidates could come forward. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have a comment? A comment, okay. The question of whether or not the board wishes to entertain additional candidates is not so much a legal question as it is a question for the board. However, the board has thirty days from the date of the vacancy to fill the vacancy, or that vacancy can be filled by petition of ten electors filed at common pleas court. So, it's in the interest of the board to fill that vacancy within thirty days. I'm not sure what number of day this is, or when thirty days runs out, so to speak, but you need to be aware of that. Otherwise, I mean, the board is at liberty to do really whatever it wants, as long as it operates within the period of time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anyone that doesn't want to comment? If you do, you don't have to.
I have one question. From the first day that it was announced that her position was open, thirty days beyond that, you have, we have as a board to choose someone, correct?
No, thirty days, when the date that it was accepted.
The date it is accepted, right, announced.
Yeah, unless her resignation said something different.
June twenty-third.
June twenty-third. From June twenty-third.
Which was the board meeting.
Right.
Okay, so, beyond that date, if we don't choose someone within that thirty-day timeframe, then it automatically goes to the courts?
It doesn't automatically go, but if there is a petition filed, then the board loses its ability to fill the vacancy.
So, who files the petition?
It's ten electors can file a petition, the same number it takes for a petition to get on the ballot. Ten electors file petition, common pleas court, to nominate one candidate or another, and then the court points it, and that divests the board of its ability to elect the...
So, we have till July twenty-third, then?
No. We have, it was twenty-third, July twenty-third.
That's what I just said.
I thought you said twenty-second.
No, I said twenty-third.
Twenty-third, yeah.
Right.
Other questions? If not, I'm gonna close the session, since this is part of that. Oh, go ahead. I didn't see.
Noel Jones, eight hundred Berry Street. And, just to sort of echo the concerns that Mr. Ely just expressed, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, this community is at a deficit of trust right now. And the district is rife with nepotism and cronyism, and the people are very upset about it. These candidates might be fine candidates, and Mr. Castro Vinci, for example, who wouldn't love a controller on the school board? I mean, we're dealing with a budget crisis, it would be nice to have someone with that experience, but I'm concerned that one thing that has been lost sight of is the actual role of the elected school board, which is that they are elected to represent the people who pay the taxes, that pay the administration, and that pay for all of the services that are administered through the school district. And so, the school board is supposed to be a watchdog over the administration. I remember last year that one board member said that the role of the school board was to support the administration. That is not the role of the school board. The role of these elected officials is to be a watchdog, a check and balance for the people, to make sure that their money is protected and being spent in the best possible way to provide the best possible education for the kids in our community. So, Mr. Castro Vinci might be a fine controller and a fine professional, and he may not even like his brother. But unfortunately, we are at such a deficit of trust that not only do we need to avoid all instances of nepotism, but we need to avoid even the appearance of nepotism. And for that reason, I don't think that Mr. Castro Vinci should be running for office at all, much less be coming forward for this appointment. Unlike Mr. Ely, I do not have a problem with someone being associated with someone in the district. However, the community is so sensitive, the nerves are so raw, that if someone is even married to someone, or has a sister, or a kid, or knows someone who's a janitor, it doesn't matter, they feel like there's some undue influence that can be exerted. That is how bad the trust is right now in the community. So, I don't have an objection to Ms. McIntyre, because she's affiliated with the district, but I understand why other people do, and if we can table this and not make a decision, and just let them run for the office in the fall, that would be preferable. Thank you.
Anybody else, please? Go ahead.
I'm here just as a resident, okay? The two people that just came up, I appreciate what you said, I feel the same way. However, they are the only two out of how many residents that put their name in there. So, this is what we have, this is what we're gonna live with. Just watch whoever gets on, make them do the job. Holding it off for late at times is not gonna get you anybody else, okay? It's just not, nobody wants to do it. So, live with what you're going to get, and watch them. Make them do their job. That's what your job is here for. That's it, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Please come in, sort of step up, sign in, tell us who you are. Tell them you forgot to sign in. You got so excited.
No, you know that's not my excitement time.
I saw a little red climbing on your face.
William Marley, sixty-four North Second Street, Easton. I would just like to underscore two words that you've heard a lot of: nepotism, cronyism. Remember those when you vote. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak before I close this? If not, I will say one thing before we do close this. As a lifelong resident of this community, who spent many years on the field of athletes coaching young men and women, who as a member of a family of fifteen, with a family of a hundred and forty-nine in this valley, I think it's pathetic when I have people come up here and start blasting or bashing people because they're relatives. That's a shame. This community of Easton was founded on the brotherhood of the people next door to you. And when people come into the community who have not been born and raised here, and start kicking dirt on those who've grown up here and done the right thing by themselves, that is a shame. We should not sit here and beat somebody up just simply because their relative happens to be working here. Anywhere you go in this valley, anywhere I go in this valley, I'm bound to run into a relative. And it's a shame that if a relative wants to do something here, the fact that you're saying cronyism and nepotism, trying to tie those words in, I'll be the first one to tell you, 'cause I've argued about some things I thought were nepotism, I've argued about other things. But in this case, when there are no volunteers, and the people who took the time to step up and do their thing, I find it a little repulsive that you're gonna sit here and crucify them. That is not the way this community was, as I've grown up, was raised to deal with. So, I'm just a little appalled by it, but I'll get over my feelings. I think we need to understand this, too. If there's anybody else who wishes to step up to the plate right now, and put their name in, the door is open right now. Otherwise, we're gonna close this.
I also would like to echo this. I mean, I've been a lifelong resident of Easton, went through the school district for twelve years, and it's very difficult with the amount of people that you get to know why you're a teacher or a coach. That makes that situation very difficult if you have a niece, or a nephew, or a child that wants to follow you in your career as a teacher. My family is built on the education, and I have a lot of family members who are teachers. They don't all teach in Easton. They teach the surrounding areas. But what I'm trying to tell you, it's very difficult to find someone that has no kind of reliability with anybody in this district. It's not something that I particularly look at when I'm selecting somebody. I'm gonna look at someone that can get them up here and do the job, and do it with an ethical standard.
I would like to make one comment.
Go ahead.
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Myers. However, I think that we, as board members, need to appreciate the fact that the community does have their own opinions, their own feelings, and I think that it's important that we take those feelings and opinions into account, and not, per se, ridicule them, but maybe perhaps try to understand their perspective. That being said, I think that we all can understand the comments that were said, because even board members asked the question. So, I think that we need to respect that and move forward with our decision, taking all of those comments into account when we place a vote.
Thank you, Mrs. Ellson.
I have to say, the only reason I ask that is because I have the same frustration. I think it's a shame that my entire family has lived here for how long? Grandparents, great-grandparents, my parents, and we've all gone through the system. And to sit here and be criticized, I cut my own mother's job, as you'll recall. So, when you wanna talk about being here and doing the right thing, I have a problem with that.
Keep it under control. Anybody else have any comments? Mr.?
Yes, Lynn, you can step up and...
I wasn't gonna speak.
Wait, do you mind?
Thirty-two South Ten Street.
Sign your name in, please, if you don't mind.
I don't mind. I wasn't going to say anything, like, because people came here with good intentions, speaking their mind, and there is no way that I can really comprehend the attitude. Knowing the things that have gone on in the district in the past few years, and lawsuits, and so on and so forth, and budget cuts that have killed the school system, why would you attack citizens? You, I mean, why would these people be attacked for having, being a watchdog for the taxpayers of this city? I'm really, right now, just in shock about this reaction from the board, and I am very sorry for it, because it's so not what I wanna hear. I mean, everybody should come here feeling they are free to say what they want, and not be abused because of it. And I feel that's what just happened to two really, or three really good people, who care, who care about your children as much as anybody, and they don't have children in the district, which I think is really interesting.
May I ask a question? Why is it okay for me to be attacked for coming here and wanting to be...
No, I don't believe you were personally attacked here in any way this evening.
But when someone says there's nepotism, because my husband is in the district, or I might have other relatives, how is that fair to me, for someone who's put my time in and want to do what's right? So, I think it's an attack on both sides, and it's not fair to us either, and I think that's what we are trying to...
We are citizens, we can pretty much say what we want.
I don't disagree.
It's a public forum.
You're absolutely right.
But, the fact that there has been problems directly related to nepotism in some particular incidents makes us all very sensitive to that issue. No one, I don't believe, I don't know who you are, I'm sorry to say, but I don't believe I would ever accuse you of that. But there are other really blatant incidents. So, the citizens are very concerned about this, and in a time when money, a dollar, means so much more than it ever did, because it has to be stretched so much further, these things are important. They are so important. So, we have the right to come here and speak our minds, our hearts, and if you don't like what we say, well, too bad.
I appreciate that. I appreciate what you're saying, but in the same sense, we also have the right to speak, too. Mr. Pennbone.
My name is Frank Pennbone, two oh five Palmer Street. I don't have an issue with either candidate here today, but just to touch on what the people before me have brought up, and Ms. Hess, what you just spoke of, I'm sorry that you've been attacked. Unfortunately, that's what happens when you put yourself in a position of anything. School board, city council, mayor, you're gonna get attacked. You know I'm running for school board, I'm being attacked, I didn't even get elected. But, the voice that we have heard, the voices we have heard, I've been out in the community, I have not stopped campaigning since March. One thing that I hear more than anything is, Frank, don't let them change you. Don't forget where you came from and who you are. Not saying that the board is gonna change me, or gonna try to change me, or there's this evil thing, but that is, that's what the community concern is. The community has no trust for the board. The board is here for the community. I'm not saying the board is doing terrible, or attacking the community, I'm not saying that at all, but we must remember that, again, we are elected by the community, for the community, and the community has no trust at all, no faith in our school board, at all, none. So, when people come up and they voice about nepotism and cronyism, they have a valid point to bring that up, and I don't think it was bashing, I just think it is, you know, the voice of the community, and it's unfortunate that my community feels that way, and it's unfortunate that I have to, people tell me, Frank, don't remember where you, don't forget where you came from, don't forget who's voting for you. It's a shame that I have to hear that, because no one should forget why they're running for a position, school board. Four years, how much money have you guys made on the school board in the last four years?
None.
At all? How much time have you given? And that's what's demanded. So, when a school board member gets attacked, or this, or that, it's unfortunate, but it comes with the territory. But what was spoken here today is just the voice of the community. Unfortunately, that's how the community of Easton, I'm not gonna speak for Palmer and Forks, I don't get up there too much, south side, downtown, the west ward, and even Regalsville as I've been campaigning, do not trust the school board. I went out myself looking for candidates to run. I said, "Listen, there are seats available." People said I was crazy. Nobody wants to do it. So unfortunately, that is the view of society, of our community, and, you know, we're gonna have to do something about that, and make our community feel secure, and know that the people on the board are doing the best job for our children and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak at this time? Feel free to come up, sort of sign in, tell us who you are.
Sal Rizzo, nine hundred Butler Street in Easton. What I heard tonight, your response to the previous citizens that spoke, I felt was inappropriate, that you could've responded with a little more decorum, a little more, perhaps, ways to rebut in a more civilized manner, I thought. Because as, I am a speech and debate coach at a school in the area, not in the Easton school district, but I'm, and one of the things I've always rooted privately, and I've, but I've mentioned it to a few other people, is lack of civil discourse. But it works both ways. We've had instances where we call people names because we disagree with them. That's no way to debate. That's no way to get discourse across. We need, if people, these citizens are speaking of their concerns, no matter how you feel about those concerns, they should at least be given the respect that's due to them, as long as they're doing, they're speaking in a proper manner, and I felt that they all did speak in a proper manner in order to do that. But I thought, I expect if you're a board member, I expect professionalism, because if at my job I was not professional, or as a debate coach, I'd be out on my, I'd be out on my ear, if I wasn't professional about things. And, I mean, I see, unfortunately, day to day, watching, like, I disagree with somebody's policy, "Oh, you're a racist," or, "I disagree with you, oh, you're prejudiced," or whatever. That's not right. I mean, so, why do you disagree? How about explaining why you disagree, instead of calling people names and attacking them personally? And, so, that's all I wanted to say. I just felt, even though I wasn't gonna comment originally, I felt this needed to be said.
Thank you. You got that taken out, Frank? You got that taken out, no? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this time?
I have one question.
Go ahead, Mrs. Ellson.
Is it appropriate to ask these two candidates if they do have intention of running in the fall for this position for the remaining two years?
The question-and-answer period of that is already over.
I understand that, that's why I'm asking if it's appropriate.
I don't know if it is.
It's not inappropriate, it's an appropriate question, whether or not you wish to reopen the questions, the candidates, up to the chair or the board.
Could I present a motion to reopen? Does I present a motion to reopen for the one question?
There's a second?
Second.
Any objection? Anybody, any discussion? I'll take a vote, all those who bear to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Whole board?
Mr. Fisher?
No.
Mrs. Hess?
Yes.
Mrs. Holsberger?
Yes.
Mrs. Allison?
Yes.
Mrs. Mandarino?
No.
Mr. Riley?
Nay.
Mr. Myers?
No.
Four no, three yes.
Fail. Don't have enough votes to pass it, so it fails. Okay? We don't have enough board members here. So, it fails. With that said, we need to move on. Discussion of the interview with the candidates. Board members, here's time to discuss it amongst yourselves, before we call for a vote to fill Claire's position.
Well, may I just ask, what is the process then with the next phase? There's discussion, and then there's an appointment?
Then we call for a vote.
And then is there discussion after nomination?
Let me give some perspective. The election, the replacement of an elected official, by law, has to be completely public. So, whatever discussion there is, has to take place here. When discussion is finished, I suspect that the chair would entertain a motion to appoint and then whoever you wish to appoint, and that would require a second and be voted on as any other... code, uh, says very specifically that a vacancy shall be filled by a majority of the remaining members, so a majority of eight, unfortunately, we only have seven, has fought, and so, proceeds pretty much like any other matter of business. And votes must be public, they can't be written down. Ms. Holsberger?
Well, I'll just say, based on the discussions that have been had, um, we do know that Mr. Castro Vinci has, in fact, applied to run for a four-year seat prior to this vacancy, um, stepping up, so, I, I would just like to say, in terms of the question that was asked, we do have one candidate who is on the ballot already, um, in November, um, so, I, I don't think that there's an, an issue with questioning his intentions for the future. And, I think what Helen said, she sort of started it off, I, I live in a region where we have heard so much from the public in the time that I've been on the board, and I was shocked that only two people stepped up to fill a position, and it's a position, it's not even for a full four-year term, it's only for a couple of months, and then, you know, there's the option of, of getting on the ballot to fill out two years, and it, it really does go to show, it is a thankless job, and it, it really, you know, for the most part, although it, it, sometimes it's great, and, and there are great things going on, but, when we only have two people step forward, and those people happen to be related to people in the district, how can you hold it against them? I mean, they're willing to step up and do a job that nobody else wants to do, and so, I, I would say to both candidates, I mean, there will be moments where because of your family affiliation, there are decisions that are tough, I mean, it, it definitely comes up, there, there are things that, at, at times, it, it will, but for the most part, it really doesn't interfere with the bulk of board work. I mean, if you are related to a teacher, sometimes we're talking about teacher contracts, or something with, but, that, that's a small portion of it, then there's student issues, there's financial issues, there's contract issues, there's construction, I mean, so, sometimes, there might be a, a matter that comes up where, you know, there's a more personal attachment to that, but the bulk of the board work is not focused on those few moments, and so, I just would like to, from seeing, um, what other board members have worked with, and times when that has come, it's few and far between, it really is.
Other board members, discussion? Uh, we're now in board discussion, you are the candidate.
I am, I don't mind offering...
Okay. I'll give you that spot.
...to run for the remainder two years of the term.
You do not, or you do?
I do.
Okay. That question's been answered by the candidate voluntarily. Okay, any other discussion with, amongst the board members? With that, now I need a motion to entertain to, uh, go for the vacant, to fill the vacancy.
I would first like to see if we could motion to postpone this.
Okay, you can make your motion to postpone. Is there a second?
Is there a motion on the table?
Right, correct, correct.
Table.
Correct.
You have the motion on the floor, is there a second? No board members on the table? Okay, that pretty much says we're not going to table. Now, can we have a motion to move forward?
I'll make a motion that we move forward to fill the vacancy of Sarah Pallotti.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And that'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Mrs. Ellsman, opposed. With that said, um...
At this point, I think it's appropriate to ask for a motion, uh, to, to appoint a, someone to fill the vacancy.
Okay, at this point, now we're gonna call for a motion to fill the vacancy, um, board members can nominate their candidate.
I'll nominate Frank Castro Vinci.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion on that? If not, okay, we'll call for a vote on Mr. Castro Vinci, and we'll do it individually, by our own call. Are you ready? Go ahead, Mrs. Fisher.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Ms. Holsberger?
Yes.
Ms. Allison?
No.
Ms. Mandarino?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Six yes, one no.
We have six next, let me go for the next candidate, Mr. Smith, or we just stop there, 'cause we have six of those.
Uh, six in favor?
Six in favor.
No, he's the one.
Fast. With that said, Mr. Castro Vinci, you have been elected by this body to be the newest member of the school. Now, you will have to rise to take the oath of office, which will be given to you by our...
Or run.
Mr. Castro Vinci, if you would raise your right hand, I think everybody can hear you.
Sure.
From that awareness, as long as everybody can hear you, everybody can hear you.
Okay, raise your right hand, and, uh, repeat after me, I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States. (laughter)
(laughter) I solemnly swear that I will obey...
And obey, support, obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Obey and defend.
Here, you wanna read? I'll make it easier on us.
Frank Castro Vinci, you solemnly swear... That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
That counts, congratulations.
Congratulations. With that said, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
He will be sitting when we take him into the room for a few minutes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is there a second? Okay, we will adjourn, we'll have a short executive session, and we will come back with a regular board meeting, so please hang loose for a few minutes. Mr. Castro Vinci-